It is Monday, April 8th, 2024 at 7:45. We're present in room D 205 of the Mount Lebanon High School, and public participation is also available via Zoom. Can we please have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Burden?
Here.
Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Mrs. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman?
Here.
Mrs. Genzel?
Here.
Mrs. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Wyland?
Here.
All members are present.
So the first item that we're going to discuss, the first section that we're going to discuss is the finance section, Section 2, 2A is our treasurer's report. Dr. Freeze?
Thank you. For 2A, the treasurer's report, you will see submitted the treasurer's report for March 2024. That gives the breakdown of general fund, payroll account, capital projects fund, real estate tax account, cafeteria, general fund breakdowns, each of those with breakdowns of the actual amounts that we currently have in those funds.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? I'll add the question. I think for the meeting next week, it would be good to include the monthly versus actual for March. I know it was embedded in the presentation, the slide deck that we looked at, but just to include it, the treasurer's report.
Absolutely.
And is that a component that, moving forward, now that, you know, we've put some new operational protocols in place, that that's going to be a continuing part of this moving forward?
Yes, moving forward.
Great.
And sorry, I apologize. I thought that it was in here. We have the report, but I, it looks as though we haven't uploaded it. So I will ensure it's there for next week.
Thank you.
As I said, we got the chance to review the data, but just to include it there. Other questions or comments from the board? 2B, the monthly list of bills.
The monthly list of bills for April are located in this file. You will see it broken down by each of our funds. It is categorized in alphabetical order by the described description of the payment. So for instance, on the first page, you will see the vendor names in alphabetical order by the description of contracted service.
Are there any questions or comments from the board on the list of bills?
Yeah. What do we contract with Lockhart Tire for?
Guessing tires.
Mr. Merciniak?
Well, those are some expensive tires.
Yeah. There would be a replacement of tires for our district vehicles.
Other questions? Item C is the list of tax refunds.
The tax refunds for this month total $348,978.35. This is a cumulative total for the 2023 tax refunds of $540,491.26, and a cumulative total for all tax refunds in '23, '24 of $899,719.39. On the second page of this document, it provides a breakdown of all of the refunds that were provided. The largest, the largest refunds go to the Galleria with just about $231,000, and the other one goes to the apartment complex Cameron for a total of almost $48,000.
I do have a question because I know that the Galleria tax had already been reduced, I think last year. Was this, did they just pay before that was settled? And so we, or were they further reduced?
They were further reduced. With the declining CLR, they have filed, they filed another appeal, including the 2022 and '23 years, and they filed another one for '24. We got an adverse ruling regarding '22 and '23, which relates to this refund. That has been appealed, but in the meantime, refund needs to be paid.
And what, has a ruling been made on their 2023, 2024 appeal yet?
It has not, no. It was just filed.
There's a slight uptick in residential appeals, or reassess values for CR. Do we think that that's going to be a trend that's going to stick with us the next couple of months or for the foreseeable future?
So, yeah, with the CLR, what it is at 54.5%, there's been a lot of, you know, push to file appeals and try to reduce taxes. So, yeah, that's something we can anticipate not ending.
And I would say it's impactful to us from a standpoint of revenues. The CLR, the most recent decrease in what the value can be is something for our retail properties and our businesses that has significantly impacted us as a school district. And we are not a school district that has a lot of large corporations or large buildings that they pay taxes. So the ones that do, when they get the tax refunds, it does hit us pretty hard.
Nor do we have room for expansion.
We do not. Yeah, we cannot buy, build a skyscraper, I don't believe.
Any other questions or comments on the list of tax refunds? Item D is the list of unusable equipment.
This month, we have another list of unusable equipment. They are all novels. They, there are some good ones on here. There are quite a few. Our English department has been going through all of their resources and determining what is no longer used in the curriculum. And so these items are all of the items that we're putting forth as unusable equipment.
Any questions or comments or?
What's our success rate with getting buyers for these books? We don't know. They don't buy them.
No, not typically. But we, we do put it out there because you never know. Sometimes there are other school districts that are looking, but there, it's not something that we're making a lot of money off of it.
Do we donate them if we are unable to sell them?
Yes.
Additional questions or comments? Okay. Item E is the April 2024 list of budgetary transfers.
As we shared a few months ago, we are now showing publicly all of the budget transfers that need to take place in order to make purchases. And you will see a breakdown of each of the budget transfers for the month of April. They range from movement within our music department to purchase different types of supplies, moving from student travel accounts to fine arts for dues and fees for things like PMEA, high school memberships, moving those into, into the principal supply line for graduation gowns. We needed to repair our chiller, and so we moved money from one line into another to ensure that that service could take place at the middle school. You'll also see movement from certain lines into other lines to pay for sewage bills, water bills, elevator maintenance, plumbing supplies. Again, PMEA, moving things from one music line to another, as well as uniforms for basketball, to make sure, and those were being moved from athletic scoreboard repair and such, uniforms for volleyball. We also have another one for PMEA. Our students are very, very talented, and we want to make sure that those opportunities exist for them. And those are the April budget transfers.
Would you anticipate this level of transfers being needed in the future?
Yes, this year. And I say that because of the information we shared a couple of meetings ago, that the planning for this school year did not include accurate planning for these types of activities or other activities.
Yeah, I meant moving forward.
Oh, you mean next year?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Just in case. I think it's good for the public to see where we're moving funds after we have completed the budget process because things do come up. This year, we're seeing quite a few of them. We may see some next year, too, until we get ourselves in a better place. But we want to make sure that it's, it's public what we're, where we're moving the funds from.
I appreciate the level of detail. Other questions and comments? Okay. And the next item, item F, is the 2024, '25 proposed final budget. This is in the format required by the state and an action we have to take in the timeline requirement of the state. Is there?
Yes.
Any additional information?
I would just share that for anybody just watching the meeting now, that a presentation was given at 7:00 PM related to the budget, which gave a breakdown of not only our current district data, but also the preliminary 2024, 2025 budget that will give you additional information. That meeting was recorded and will be placed online alongside the slide deck for your use. And this form, as Mrs. Fleischer shared, is the form that is required by the state to be approved. We need to let it sit for 30 days in order for us to vote on it, which gives us that May 20th date, unless we need to do further work in regards to furloughs, as was shared in the budget forum. So as of right now, this will sit, and the goal will be for us to vote on it on May 20th with a balanced budget. As was shared in the budget forum, we are still in a deficit of $2.5 million, and we'll be working with district leadership groups to ensure that we present a balanced budget for the board to vote on in May.
Excellent. So just to reiterate, this is a required step to pass a proposed budget that shows deficit spending and a use of fund balance. But the goal of the board and the administration is that the budget that we pass in May or in June, if needed, will be balanced without the use of fund balance. And the goal of that budget is to pass a budget that centers students where the least impact of any of the proposed revenue cuts are felt by students and the classroom or in our activities. And that also retains staff. So there are some very creative and difficult work and conversations happening between the administration and all of our employment groups to find creative ways to retain the talented folks that we have in, you know, the positions that we need in the district. But we will likely, as a board, consider an action next week, on April 15th, to authorize furloughs, which we would need to do for that option to even be on the table to meet the timeline required by the state and by our contracts with our employment groups. Other questions or comments on the proposed budget?
So on that, if I may, Mrs. Fleischer, on that last point regarding furloughs, again, because I know that that is something that may, you know, cause folks to lean in a little bit. That the, the plan is, the aspiration is, is to balance the budget without the use of fund balance and without furloughs to the greatest extent possible. But it's necessary in this moment. And I know I'm repeating exactly what you said, Ms. Fleischer, but it's, I think, for anybody that may have not caught it the first time around, or the third time around, as it may be, tonight, that we don't want to lay anybody off, and, and we don't want to use fund balance. And that's, that's the goal. That's, that's where we're headed. And I can tell you, from my perspective, at the prior meeting, Dr. Freeze took a moment to thank all of our, you know, employee groups that are working with the administration to get this hard work done. And I would also like to extend that thanks to those same folks. You know, it's, it's, it's always been evident to me, but, but again, through this process, it's evident to me that how much our team cares about the students and about the work, the good work that's done here, and how they're willing to chip in and lend a hand and do what's necessary to get the good work done. So I would also like to extend, you know, a few words of thanks and acknowledgement to those folks that are helping us get this stuff done. But I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Freeze and her team for the work, the really impressive work that they have done with these difficult circumstances that they've been presented with. I've been eminently impressed with the leadership, with the willingness to, from the top down, from, from Dr. Freeze and her entire executive team, hands-on, meeting by meeting, dollar by dollar, starting fresh with a zero-based budget, with a blank sheet of paper, and sitting down with each department and really understanding what's needed, what's necessary, you know, and what we can do to improve. And, you know, there have been some discussions in pockets as, as Dr. Freeze, you know, gets up to speed here in her first year about vertical alignment, you know, about supervisory structures. And I know that there's been some of that that's been applied to this process that has been shared. And I think that makes a difference, right? You know, I think that the thoughtful attention to detail and thoughtful leadership has, has, you know, reaped the successes that she's been able to, her and her team have been able to attain so far. So thank you, Dr. Freeze, and thank you to your team for what you guys have done to get us to this place, to drive down the number. And, you know, I look forward to accomplishing, you know, the high bar that you've set as far as a balanced budget, you know, and do everything that we can to avoid furloughs in that process.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Sure. I'd like to reiterate to the community that we have a commitment to sound financial management. And this budget forum and the process behind it has equipped us with more information than we have ever had in the past. This is a really detailed and comprehensive financial checkup, and it has not presented initially very good news, but that we are committed to fixing it because we are committed to doing that transparently. I don't think you'd ever see more detail than you, when you did this evening. It's important to know exactly what we spend taxpayer funds on and exactly where we're falling short in budgeting, exactly what our kids need, and exactly what they may not need our money for. So we do have a commitment to the community. And I also wanted to, I guess it's been said, but this preliminary, can we just highlight that and underline that and say this is about to change? We are continuously evaluating areas where it can additionally be cut back. A deficit budget is not acceptable, and drawing from the fund balance cannot continue. So this is an accurate draft of what might happen if we didn't fix things, but we've asked her and her team to work diligently to trim all those areas. Nobody's in favor of cutting programs. Not one person at this table is interested in cutting staff. Not one person at this table wants, wants to see kids have less in Mount Lebanon. We're here because we have high expectations of our kids, and we know that the community has high expectations of the school district, and we're committed to that. But we can't do it without financial health and a bit of a process to get there. So I'm appreciative, greatly appreciative of the team that's worked on this. But I just wanted to say, for the community that's listening, that you've tasked us with this financial oversight, and we're, we're going to stop this habitual overspending problem. And we have to do two things to do that, reduce spending and increase our income. So those are, those are my comments and thoughts on the presentation.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that I want to highlight is this is not a budget that provides cuts. As it currently stands, it is about $7 million above our current level of spending for this year. So what it does, though, is it right sizes some activities where we took a zero-based budget. We looked at our staffing data, at our enrollment data, at the drivers of costs like special education, tuition, transportation, ELL learners. We looked at every department budget for supplies, and instead of just plugging in a number that had been used for a decade to say, this is what this budget is, we looked at what is actually needed to provide the program and provide the services. And then from there, we trimmed down, in some cases, to a level that does represent a belt tightening that we're hoping to eventually be able to get back to current levels of supplies or programming. But overall, this is not a budget that cuts programs. This is not a budget that cuts spending. In fact, just the opposite. It's a budget that appropriately reflects our current staffing, their salaries, their benefits, based on contracts, our current tuition and transportation based on students that we know are enrolled in programming. And it really just uses sound financial practices in budgeting and in estimating to have an accurate picture of the operation of the entire district. I'm appreciative, as a board member and as a community member, a taxpayer and a parent, of having that level of data and detail with a 10-year look back and a five-year projection. And I think, you know, we are where we are. We're moving forward positively. We're keeping the students top of mind in everything we do. But this is actually not a budget cut. I would like to just point that out.
Yeah. I would also like to add to that. Thank you to Dr. Davis, Dr. Shulo, and Dr. Freeze for going so far deep that they're finding things that may have been paid for twice. They're finding things that licenses were there that don't need to be there. There are opportunities for us to use other software, better programming for our students. So it wasn't just about, like Ms. Fleischer said, about cutting, but more or less streamlining and make sure that what we are using for our district is what needs to be used and what needs to happen now. As we know, things change, and you get comfortable, and people are adding things, and you don't know after a while. So I really take the time to thank you for a fresh reset so we can move forward and be the most successful we can for our students and community. So thank you.
Other questions and comments? Okay. So again, the board will need to take action at the voting meeting next week on this proposed final budget to meet state timelines. I will reiterate for a fifth or sixth time that this is not the final budget, and we expect to see that hopefully in May. That's our plan and our intention. But if furlough should become necessary due to the additional work of the administration, then we would pass that in June. And we will provide the same level of sort of detail as we go through next week, May meetings, as we have to date, as far as where any additional revenues, if any, but we may be done on that front, are coming from, and then where the expenditure changes are coming from. So moving on to Section 3, Facilities. Item A, we have a proposed lease for the Mount Lebanon Extended Day Summer Program.
The board is asked to approve a lease agreement with the Mount Lebanon Extended Day Program for the summer of 2024. The term of agreement is from June 17th of 2024 to August 2nd of 2024, with fees totaling $13,022.10 for the use of the following spaces in the Mount Lebanon High School: nine classrooms, a section of the cafeteria, a language cafe, tennis courts, when available, and lockers. This is a 3% increase from the 2023 summer leases, and I recommend the approval of this agreement.
Any questions or comments? Okay. We also have item B, which is a Mount Lebanon Extended Day Program lease for the 2024, 2025 school year.
The board is asked to approve a lease agreement with the Mount Lebanon Extended Day Program for the 2024, 2025 school year with fees totaling $35,025.48 for use of spaces in all district elementary school buildings for before and after-school care and at Hoover, Howe, and Lincoln Elementary Schools for kindergarten care. This is a 3% increase from the 2023, 2024 rates, and I recommend the approval of this agreement.
Any questions or comments on?
When families pay for extended? Sorry. When families pay for extended day, they're not paying the school district, correct? They're paying the outside provider, which is called Mount Lebanon Extended Day.
Yes.
But it is not a part of our, of our school district. So those are not considered revenues. And the determination to raise prices on extended day is not something that we decide because those aren't our revenues.
Well, the lease fee is a revenue to the district. And we have been raising that lease by about 3% a year annually, just to keep up with costs.
It keeps up with inflation, but what I meant was the tuition fees
The tuition.
are not considered revenues to the district.
No. But I would say, as, as a former Mount Lebanon Extended Day Program parent, I can't believe it's former, that I, our partnership with that program is vital. They do provide half-day kindergarten care for students within the building, for the students that can secure a spot. And they do provide before and after-school care. And it's an important service that this nonprofit provides for local working families. And I'm so glad that we are able to work with them to provide it and keep the increased costs the minimal because that, that cost does get then passed down to families and their program fees to Mount Lebanon Extended Day. Oh, right. Item C in Facilities is the proposed facilities rental fee schedule for Monday through Saturday for the 2024, 2025 school year.
The board is asked to approve a 3% increase in Monday through Saturday facilities rental fees for the 2024, 2025 school year, and I recommend the approval of these lease fees.
Do these also represent an increase?
3%.
3% increase. Questions or comments on the lease fees, Monday through Saturday?
I have a question. Hello?
Yes, Eva.
Hi there. So this is not necessarily a question about the, the fee schedule, but it is more a policy question in regard to proposed facility rentals. Are we, can we add a disclaimer when an organization is advertising the meeting or event location that it's noted that public school property is being rented after hours and that this rental carries no endorsement by the school district?
Yeah, I thank you for your question, Ms. Gelman. We did have some community questions about this issue recently for outside groups, community groups that rent our facilities after hours for a fee. And I think we were planning to refer the issue to the policy committee to review, which we plan to do. There just, there was no policy committee meeting this month, but we'll refer that for a future meeting.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the facility rental fees? Or facility rentals in general? So there is a separate fee schedule for Sundays for the high school.
For this one, the board is asked to approve a 3% increase in Sunday facilities rental fees for the 2024, 2025 school year, and the superintendent recommends approval of these lease fees.
Any questions or comments? Item E is the stadium occupancy license.
The board is asked to approve a recommended 3% increase in stadium lease fees for the 2024, 2025 school year, and I recommend approval of these fees.
And just to clarify, this is for outside groups who are leasing our stadium, not an increased beta?
That's correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the stadium fees? All right. All right. The next item is the user agreement with the Mount Lebanon Aqua Club.
The board is asked to approve the agreement with the Mount Lebanon Aqua Club with a cost increase of 3% for the term beginning September 1st, 2024, and ending August 31st, 2025, in the form presented, and I recommend approval of this agreement.
Questions or comments on the Aqua Club lease? Or agreement? Okay, and then Item G is the oft-referred-to transportation agreement?
Yes, the proposed transportation agreement. The board is asked to approve an agreement with First Group for the provision of transportation services for a term of five years, beginning July 1st, 2024, and continuing through June 30th, 2029, in the amount of $1,681,362.8 for the 2024-2025 school year, $1,741,165.46 for the 2025-2026 school year, $1,795,627.69 for the 2026-2027 school year, $1,851,883.28 for the 2027-2028 school year, and $1,909,924.79 for the 2028-2029 school year. All costs are based on 34 trips per day, three transportation aids, and 11 trips per day with two transportation aids during the ESY program. And I recommend the approval of this agreement.
All right. And I know that getting to this final agreement was quite a process. Is there any additional background that you all can provide to the board and the community for sort of where we started and how we negotiated this current proposal?
Yeah, absolutely. So we invited vendors to participate in a student transportation services RFP with proposals due on January 3rd of 2024 for a five-year contract beginning this July. As part of the proposal, there was quite a few things that we were looking for, including accident notification and response procedures, outline of contractors' pre-trip and post-trip inspection policy, copy of the driver/employee handbook, outline of driver training and certification program, outline of drug and alcohol screening program, list of vehicles to include spares that will be assigned to the agreement, a list of Pennsylvania school district references, including contact information, number of routes, and years of service to the school district, a three-year accident history, proof of insurability, whether its bonds or contracts have been, whether its bonds or contracts have ever been revoked or prematurely terminated in compliance with prior contracts. We sent this RFP to 11 companies and reviewed and received only two proposals. Transportation is a really niche enterprise right now and is very, very challenging to get people to agree to do service for transportation. I'm sure you see it on the news all the time in other local school districts. Fortunately, we have a smaller footprint for transportation. But to give you an example, the other RFP that came in was over $3 million, and we had to pay gas and install a lot of safety features in order for it to meet our qualifications. If you can imagine lending your teenager your car and telling them they have to pay for the gas that they used, I can't imagine keeping track of 34 vehicles and what gas that they used and being able to track that in a responsible way. First Student is our recommended vendor that we would utilize. Five-year contract is a typical contract size, and that is what we've asked them to do. They are very interested in becoming a part of our school community. And in the fall, for our students that will be receiving transportation, there'll be an opportunity for an open house to get to know the drivers. My goal is to treat our school bus drivers, both internally, meaning the ones that we employ here, as well as our vendors, as like our crossing guards, right? Where you get an opportunity to know our crossing guards by name. I'm sure when you're walking with your students to school, we want the same experience for our bus drivers, because we know that they spend time with the students every day, though our footprint isn't huge. It's still time in the car with someone that they may not know, and we want to make sure that their families and students get an opportunity to meet these drivers and for them to become a part of the community.
Thank you for that. And I also thank you so much for the hard work of you and Dr. Davis and Dr. Shulo and Dr. Schuman, who I know worked with the contractor to also really take a thorough look at the routes and make as many, make it as efficient as possible so that we can provide the services to the student, but also avoid the huge price hikes that we're seeing across the board in agreements.
Yes, you're exactly right. And that the team, both the special education team, the assistant superintendents, Mr. Marciniac, Ms. Ringel, everybody put in a lot of effort to thoroughly review our routes and the needs of our students to develop a plan that we believe will be not only successful, but financially sustainable as well.
Other questions and comments on the transportation contract agreement?
When there are staffing shortages for drivers, is that on First Student to figure out, or is that on the school district?
That's on them.
Yeah.
And in speaking to, we spoke to a lot of the individuals that they currently work with and got really great reviews in terms of their flexibility and their nimbleness, which I appreciate, because that doesn't always happen. Transportation, having come from a school district where we had 100 buses, I very much appreciate, I love my bus drivers, but I very much appreciate six buses, because it does admit the amount of finding people that are willing to work with you. It's really, really challenging.
I know we transport some of our students who are moving up for math from the elementary school to the middle and from the middle to the high. Are there any opportunities for cost savings by, instead of moving the students, moving a teacher to instruct them in different places, or would that not be a savings to the district?
Is that our internal transportation that does that route?
Yes. Do you want to cover that, Dr. Davis?
It's certainly an interesting concept about relocating the teachers as opposed to bringing the students to the teacher. Certainly something we could dig into. My initial reaction was that we have two buildings, thinking of middle school coming to high school. We have two buildings feeding into one teacher's classroom. So if I was to reverse that, I would need to find an additional teacher. And similarly, when we have elementary moving into middle school, they're coming from multiple buildings and they're feeding into one teacher's classroom. So the challenge would be finding all of the teachers to push down. I think that would be our challenge, but something certainly to look at.
But I think there, we do have buses within the district that do some of that kind of transportation or to events and things, though at a cost as well. Other questions or comments on the transportation agreement? All right, moving into Item 4A, the personnel, human resources item, the personnel report?
The personnel report details personnel appointments, changes in assignments, leaves of absences, resignations, sabbaticals, and retirements to be considered by the board. And this report typically is updated before the final vote, but this is the one that we have as of April 4th.
Any questions or comments on the personnel report? All right, moving on to the area of curriculum and instruction. I know we've got some meaty items today.
And this is the point in the in the meeting where you don't have to hear from me anymore, but I get to turn it over to Doctors Davis and Shulo. The first item on here is the Hoot and Mifflin Hard Court Into Reading subscription, and we'll start with Dr. Shulo with that one.
So we are asking the board to consider the proposal by HMH for the purchase of a seven-year reading subscription for grades K through 5 using the Into Reading Program. The cost right now is $709,181.14. It will be billed to the district over two installments, one each year. In the, in Item B, I do have a couple elementary items as well at the bottom. We also are working to implement the Foundations and Wilson Reading programs into the elementary experience. Foundations is a phonics-based program aligned with structured literacy for grades K through 3, and the Wilson Reading system we use in K through 5 is a tier-two intervention. Both are strong in decoding and phonetic skills for our students.
I think it's important to note that Foundations and Wilson Reading are both currently used within the district, and Into Reading would be a replacement of our reading curriculum K to 5, which is currently trending at about 15 years of existence. The other thing that's important to note is that we have put these items on here for consideration, knowing that due to budgetary constraints, we may not be able to approve these. However, we do want to make sure that our textbook adoptions take place in the event that we do have the funds to pay for them. So we're just basically pre-planning, not taking anything off the table to make sure that we're planned for that time. And then, Dr. Davis, I'll have you go through the secondary text.
Sure, thank you. So annually, you hear the presentation about textbooks. Section 803 of the Pennsylvania School Law requires that we present the textbooks and then allow them to sit for 30 days for public review and inspection. So if it's an elementary resource or text that you're interested in, you certainly can talk, contact Dr. Shulo. And if it's a secondary text, I certainly would be your point of contact. The stack that I have today is what is being presented to the board for consideration. These are new texts that the board has not seen before or approved, and I will talk briefly through each one of them. Again, they will sit for 30 days, and then I will bring to you in the subsequent months' meeting any feedback that we have received and any commentary. First, as the board is aware, a new course was adopted as part of the Curriculum Council process, Dass-based African-American Studies. And for that course, the recommended, the recommended text is Freedom on My Mind. Both of the teachers that have the potential to teach these courses or this course had the opportunity to review a number of texts and come forward with this recommendation. To arrive at this recommendation, they used a rubric, and the rubric had five domains, talked about organization, readability, and by definition, readability, we looked at difficulty in the engagement of the language in the text in terms of engagement. Element 3 was images, graphics, et cetera, you know, how enticing or inviting is the text? Element 4 was the breadth of inclusiveness, so looking at the amount of global information, referencing genders, ethnicities, the arts. So there is an element relative to inclusiveness. And then the last piece was the presence of documents and resources that you would find through the AP course. This book, there was, again, they looked at five different texts, and this book came as the recommended text predominantly for a number of reasons, the most being the interdisciplinary approach that the AP African-American Study Course expects, and they think this text does a nice job. Additionally, they described this text as being extremely well and clearly organized. The writing in it is clear, appropriate for high school students. They do a nice job in coverage of post-1960s, which is something you'll typically see in the history text. There's visually appealing graphics and images and maps. Relative to the AP preparation, it's, each chapter opens with a vignette, a two- or three-page overview of the event or the concepts to be studied in that chapter. Each chapter ends with a brief overview or a summation. Corollary, corollary to that also is about document, project, documents nicely project-based experiences that students would have relative to themes. So the first book that we're presenting for consideration is Freedom on My Mind. The second book that we're presenting is Fabric of a Nation for consideration. This would be for AP United States History Course, organized into nine time periods. Each one of those time periods are then broken down into modules, and those modules correlate directly to the AP curriculum. One of the reasons why this text was selected as a replacement for our existing text is because of the direct alignment that it has with the AP curriculum. Additionally, similarly, as you heard for the AP African-American Studies course, this text begins each module with a section entitled contextualization, which is the, one of the main areas that emphasizes critical thinking skills that is emphasized in that AP curriculum. Each time period starts, contains a breakdown of the modules in terms of a thematic process. So they really appreciate that as well. And then relative to the student engagement with this text, it talks about, I guess the text has available to students, like tips in the margin that help students identify what the major themes are. Key vocabulary is in the margin, again, helping them to understand and summarize important information. Again, they talk about pictures, graphics, critical thinking is posed inside the, inside the text. There are standalone AP skills workshops inside the text that really reinforce the writing components that are expected of our students. And then lastly, there's a component in here that talks about working with the evidence. So throughout each chapter, it really emphasizes primary and secondary sources. So a second book presented for consideration is Fabric of a Nation for our AP United States History Class. And then finally, the series that I have over here would go from middle, it's a French series. Chemins would be the series. And I think the unique part to this, I want to make sure that everyone's aware, is that our, the first unit of this book or the first book of this series is also our middle school curriculum. So in our middle schools, if you go through 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, that can, that is considered Level 1. So you can either use this book in middle school, or if you don't take French in middle school, let's say you took German in middle school, and you're coming to the high school and you want to switch over to Level 1, this would be the book. So this is Level 1, whether it's 6th through 8th grade or high school's Level 1. So it has a dual purpose. And then, as you see through, I have Level 2, Level 3, Level 4, and then the AP text is here. So our team, team of French teachers looked at resources. They came forward with this recommendation. I have the hard copies here, but point of information for the board and for our families, we're looking to purchase an e-text series that students would have available to them at home at any point. So although I have hard copies here, just want to be clear with this set and this series, we would be looking to purchase an e-text series and provide that to our students. Teachers talked about these texts have great pacing, great curriculum, appropriate for each level of development that our students have, really great resources that are updated, particularly when they looked at the online platform, and they felt that the online platform was easy to navigate. Additionally, they describe for students that the vocabulary is in context, the vocabulary is tied to grammar concepts. There's a plethora of frequently updated authentic reading materials available to our students. There are very nicely student-paced online activities, and then a great, a bank of online resources available to teachers, whether it's keys, workbooks, some practice exams, listening activities. And then the very bottom book, which is Thames, is the AP text, and it's aligned with the 2019 College Board Curriculum Exam Descriptions Update. So this is aligned to the most current version of the AP exam. So I have a series of French texts, a number of social studies texts put on review for the next 30 days, and certainly I'll make available any comments that I receive.
So questions or comments on either the Into Reading subscription or the textbook adoption?
Mrs. Fleischer, I just have one question for Dr. Shulo, going back to the Into Reading. Is there any option to break that up into three installments, or did we find that's only two for sure?
The request has been made to break that into three installments. I've also requested another look at our proposal to try to drop some more costs. Have not gotten a response yet. I anticipate we will have a response on both items prior to presenting the final budget for progress.
Great, thanks.
We really appreciate your hard work on this. I know you've all been working since Dr. Freeze started in July and even before on, you know, having, we selected teachers to op- know, having, we selected teachers to opt in to test different ELA curriculum, and it's really, it's really appreciated. I'm grateful.
As a parent of one of those students that has been, yes, in the fifth-grade testing group, I would just like to say that it has been remarkable, watching him grow in reading and watching him actually love reading without me yelling at him to read, has been monumental. So I really hope that we can adopt this, and I know how much work, just to piggyback off them, you've all done savings in costs to try to make this happen for our students. And I say thank you from at least, you know, our fifth-grade class, because they have been doing amazing with it. So thank you.
Logistically, I guess I have a question about voting as a board to approve this subscription prior to adopting a final budget and knowing if there will be tolerance, even though I know this is $240,000 less than the initial proposal and is spread over two years. Just to be realistic, we're looking at everything and whether we would be able to move forward with this proposal this year. Is there a need to approve this this month, or would we be?
No, we just paired this with the textbook adoption, and it will sit for 30 days with the textbook adoption. But we wanted to make sure that as people are reviewing it, that they also know what the cost is associated with it as well.
And so we would not necessarily see that as a voting item?
That's correct. Yes, it's just there, it'll kind of carry over to May.
Hope we can make it work, maybe somehow.
Are both the AP African-American Studies and United States, US History course textbook recommendations aligned with college board recommended textbooks for those courses?
Absolutely. It was one of the recommended texts.
That was a question I had, because I know particularly with the African-American Studies course, that's, we're a fairly early adopter. I didn't know if we had any data on other districts using this text and whether they were finding success, or has that test been taken yet?
Yeah, we have now looked in other districts. The college board gave five recommendations, we looked at all five. And then based on the feedback from our teachers and the completion of that rubric, this is the one that they arrived at.
And then, Dr. Shulo, the Foundations and the Wilson Reading system, if those were adopted in May, would those be an expense for the current year, or would that be next budget year?
Those are part of our complete reading resource package, which is budgeted in our elementary reading departmental budget. So that is one of the other items we budgeted for, for 2425.
Okay.
So, Dr., I'm sorry. Dr. Shulo, so the cost of all three parts of this is included in the proposed final budget that was reviewed tonight?
Yes, the cost of Foundations, Wilson, and the HMH product are included in the budget that was presented.
Thank you.
And if we were to determine, Dr. Davis, this one's for you, if we were to determine that we're unable at this time to afford the purchase of certain books, would, for example, the French curriculum that's been used up until this point be adequate for another year, or is it imperative to switch out French textbooks at this time?
So I'd answer that in two ways. Levels one through four, it's currently an e-text series that's expiring, so that we would need to renew. And the Thames book, the AP course, our current resources could carry us through. I would tell you that the e-text that are expiring, if the board does approve these, we have the funds currently to be able to renew.
This year?
This year.
I believe, just for transparency, that in our discussions, we had the tolerance in this year's budget to purchase the new African-American Studies resource as well as renew the French resource. But we were going to look at the US History book as an approval, and then if funds were available, we would move forward.
You're correct.
Other questions on the textbooks? If anyone is interested in reading some US History, French, or elementary English Language Arts, you can contact Dr. Davis and Dr. Shulo and view the actual books. The French will be an e-text, but we do have hard copies for review as well. All right, item C, the Act 80 request for 2023, 2024.
I'll turn that over to Dr. Shulo.
This month, the board has asked to approve the Act 80 days for the 2324 school year. Section 1504, as amended by Act 80 of 1969, authorized exceptions to the 180-day requirement or to the daily schedule providing minimum instruction minutes required are met. These exceptions are only for certain purposes, including professional development and parent conferences, and the superintendent recommends approval for this schedule.
Questions or comments on the Act 80 schedule? Dr. Shulo, I do have one question. I know it's been our practice to sort of retroactively approve these since, is that intended to be the continued practice moving forward, to approve these in the spring?
I think we have. That is the expectation to stay.
Okay, and item D in curriculum and instruction is our agreement with the Children's Home Pediatric View Program?
This is a request for the board to approve an agreement with the Children's Home Pediatric View Program for the provision of consultation services and team meeting participation for a Mount Lebanon School District exceptional student for one year, beginning April 16th of 2024, at a rate of $125 per hour for up to 20 hours, not to exceed $2,500. And I recommend the approval of this agreement.
Questions or comments? Is this, this is an evaluation service, or is it a provision of education service?
Hope Dr. Schuman provide that information.
It's a little bit of both. We are conducting the evaluation, but this group would be helping us to consult and participate in meetings for the student.
Okay. All right, other questions or comments? Okay, and then the final item in this category is the Mount Lebanon High School Ski and Board Club Student Trip.
The high school administration is requesting permission for the high school ski and board club to travel to Jay, Vermont, as a ski club trip to Jay Peak Resort from January 16th through the 20th of 2025. Students will not miss any days of school and will be responsible for the cost of the trip, and I recommend the approval of this student trip.
They had a really great view of the totality on Jay Peak. I saw a video from a fund who was neither here nor there. Questions or comments on the actual matter? Okay. We are now opening the floor for questions or comments from residents and taxpayers. Presentations or comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach the podium. Please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, Al Freoni, Main entrance drive. Listening to the discussion on the budget, I think I understand that we seem to be 1.5 million in deficit currently for the current year still, right? And obviously, we're in, just finished the third quarter, so we're going into the fourth quarter, so we still have to find one and a half million to balance the current year's budget. And the proposed budget is still two and a half million off. I thought your presentation was very detailed, thank you. We appreciate that. Obviously, this is, I don't like to tell anyone, it's the April discussion meeting. And what I didn't hear tonight was, because we're adopting the budget next week, I didn't hear any discussion or direction or vision to the superintendent as to what the board's desires are with regard to the proposed budget. Do we anticipate that we're going to still use two and a half million dollars of the fund balance? Are we going to ask the superintendent? We'd like to get that down to a million dollars. A $300,000 house is going to pay $513 more this year, next year, the year after that. And obviously, if we use two and a half million dollars of the fund balance this year, you already start next year with a two and a half million dollar hole, plus you got to find another two and a half million dollars. So if we adopt, because I didn't hear any directions to the superintendent not to do anything, but it's kind of like, are we going to spend money on $750,000 on a reading program? Are we not? I'm just trying to see where we might end up, because you come back in May, and now the final budget is pretty much there. Just looking to see what the thoughts are on the board and where the superintendent's going, but I thank you all for your service. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freoni. And just because it was said a few times, to reiterate, the board direction or goal is to present a balanced budget that uses zero dollars of fund balance for 2024, 2025, and to end this school year ending with as little use of fund balance as possible. Currently, that stands at about 1.5. We are looking at a mixture of potential furloughs, staff reassignments, changes to curriculum adoption, including inter-reading and other resources, and EDRs and other programs in the coming six weeks between now and the final budget, to find an additional two and a half million dollars of savings for the budget.
And I think it's really important to note that these last 2.5 million, not that it all hasn't been critical, this part's the most critical part, because it is associated with people. And I want to be very clear to the public and to our staff that we will be taking great care and making the very best decisions, because our students are valued, our staff is valued. As Mr. Weyland shared earlier, our staff has been incredible throughout this whole process. Nobody expected this to be our current situation, but we know that if we don't take this opportunity to kind of re-envision ourselves, it's a missed opportunity. But please know that I'm committed to further reducing this year's budget so that we get closer to using less fund balance, and then in addition to that, having a presented balanced budget in May that does not utilize fund balance. And I think that's something that should be shared with the public. So if any of you go back and you talk to your friend groups, please share that message that we want to have a minimal impact, and we're working with members of our school communities in terms of our school leaders. We're not just doing it to just do it. We want to be thoughtful and planned with the goal of presenting a balanced budget without the use of fund balance.
And I think to be like as transparent as possible in conversations that the board has had with the administration, I think goal number one is minimal impact on students. Goal number two is balanced budget. Goal number three is staff retention, and goal number four is, if at all possible, to continue with the ELA resource, because that's something that the district has been talking about for probably six years. So if it's possible with the work that they've done to get the price down and spread the cost, but it may not feel be possible. Other questions or comments?
Ms. Fleischer, just one other thing that Mr. Freoni raised, is he talked about the 1.5 million dollars in deficit that's outstanding this year. I know that we mentioned it earlier, but just again, for the sake of pedagogical repetition, that was 1.930 days ago, and Dr. Freeze and her team did a great job of driving that down to 1.5. And I know in addition to trying to find the 2.5 million dollars to have zero use of fund balance for next year's budget, she's also going to continue to work to get that 1.5 down as low as they're able in these last few weeks before the end of the school year.
That was a helpful question.
Yeah.
You look there.
And we do have expenses for the current fiscal year that ends in June that go through the summer because of the way that some of the salaries are structured. Please state your name and address.
George Anne Bauer, Sage Drive. And my comment doesn't really, is kind of a rhetorical question. I listened to several people comment on the presentation that Dr. Freeze and her professionals gave, and how impressed they were and thankful with the detail that she went into and that they presented, and that they'd never seen anything like that before. And I guess my question is to the school board is, since you've been elected, most of you, more than one year, what have you been doing? Why weren't you asking these questions? Why were you watching our district go down lower and lower and lower every year and never standing up to say anything? And like I say, I don't expect an answer, I just want you to go home and think about what your responsibility is in all of this, because you were all elected to look out for our finances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Other comments? Please state your name and address.
Becky Campanaro, 30 Carlton Drive. I would like to thank Dr. Freeze for her thorough presentation this evening, particularly during the budget forum. Seeing the tenure history of district enrollments with the breakdown of special education enrollments, spending, and revenue, along with the adjustments for inflation, spending for student and benchmarking spending with peer districts, was immensely informative for myself and provided a lot of context for those of us who aren't spending our days working inside the walls of our 10 school buildings, something that I hadn't seen before. I want to commend Dr. Freeze and her team for the work that they have done and are continuing to do to find every spare cent in the budget to cut costs for the 2024 budget. I also want to thank the administrative team for their proactive actions that have significantly reduced spending this year, as Mr. Weyland just mentioned, bringing down another $400,000 from a month ago for the proposed or projected spending for this year, and preventing the district from further overspending in the current budget year. I know that everyone in the community is feeling tense about the possible cutting of funds to their favorite program, and it is clear that the next several years are going to require more than just hard work on the part of our administrators and professional staff to tighten the purse strings. But based on what I saw this evening, I am confident that the administration and this board will do everything possible to keep decisions student-centered and continue to work to right the ship so that we can begin looking forward with a positive financial outlook for the district. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to offer comment or question? State your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Abby Murphy, Ridgefield Avenue. So the level of detail that Dr. Freeze has presented us with will help us to understand where we're going. But in order for us to understand and trust where we're going, we kind of have to know how we got here. And so it seems like the prior administration did not give the same level of transparency regarding the budget process. It feels like maybe that was lacking, because you all seem to be very happy with the way Dr. Freeze has presented it. So it feels to us like this is the first time you're getting this much information. So having said that, what was the approval process before? Were you getting the same amount of information? What do you expect to receive? Because if there is this much overspending, I'm just not understanding how that happened and how we got to this point. And somebody has to be responsible for that. And there are people here, I understand, who can't defend themselves or say or give their intention, but I think we do need to understand how we got to this point to be able to trust how we're going to get to the next point. And I do have the utmost confidence that you'll get us there, Dr. Freeze. I mean, everything that you put, it makes sense, and I understand it, but how did we get here? And I don't think we can just ignore how we got here. I think we need to have some answers for that. So if that's something that can be given to people at some time, I don't expect it right now, but I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, well, and I do just want to note for folks who are here tonight or following along at home, that there were presentations with nearly the same level of detail in December, January, and that there were presentations with nearly the same level of detail in December, January, and February regarding how we ended the 2022, 2023 school year in every category of revenue and expense, where we currently are with the 2023, 2024 versus budget, and areas that were under-budgeted, and then where we're going. So that information is all publicly available through the district website and on board docs. I believe most of those presentations can be found in the board superintendent reports, but perhaps there might be the ability to consolidate them to provide a better snapshot, so you don't have to dig for them. But there are sort of additional level of detail reports for, again, how we ended last school year, where we are this school year, as there is for what you saw tonight with where we're going.
I just add to that, I've seen that, and I think all of us have, because we've been paying more attention as it's become a little more critical. But I think somehow letting us understand how we got to this point, because you had to have, and I know all of you weren't on the board, so this isn't for everybody, but you had to be getting some information, and it just doesn't make any sense how you have this much overspending. Maybe they didn't give you the information, maybe you weren't getting the full picture, but I think that people deserve to know how we got here.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think that those also include the suite of operational changes that are currently in place in our business office. So those are new practices that were not in place prior. There are obviously, I think, for those who were at last month's meeting, some of those items that are personnel matters that we're not able to discuss at public meetings. So other questions? Was there anyone online, Mr. Sengel? One online.
Hi, Anne Smith, 208 Roycroft Avenue. I have questions about the potential reading purchases. Dr. Shudo said that foundations will be the tier-two intervention. Is that across the district in each and every elementary school? So that's my one question. And then will the intermediate elementary students, so I guess three through five, will they also get the Reading Wilson system as their tier-two intervention in each elementary school? Thank you.
As I can respond to that, foundations is not a tier-two. Foundations is part of our core reading program for all students K through three. Wilson Reading System is the tier-two program. That's available to all students K through five who qualify for that second intervention level.
Thank you for your comment. Any additional comments in the room or online? Okay. So I want to announce upcoming public meetings on Monday, April 15th, at 7:30 here in Room D 205, and also available via Zoom. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?